I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Bernie Jeff, Assistant Minister of Southfield Board of Education.
Good evening, Alan Smith, Vice President.
I am Robinson, Secretary.
Michael Cole, Treasurer.
Ms. Sandy Lewis, Board Trustee.
Good evening, Ray Smith, Board Trustee.
Good evening, Linda Wood, Superintendent.
Debbie Trent, Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services.
Joan Newberry, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources Legal and Labor Affairs.
Paula Mike C., Associate Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction.
And Cabinet Member, Staff, Paula Anderson, Jan, and Nicole Christian. On this side, there's a minute. On August 25, 2014, Mr. Darryl J. Buchanan resigned as trustee in the Southfield Board of Education. Mr. Buchanan was elected as trustee at the Southfield Public School District in 2005 and faithfully served the Southfield community. I want you to know that I was elected with Mr. Buchanan, and he is the best of the best. I have served this community with dignity and with intelligence far beyond what I would have expected. And he also served on the Oakland County M.A.S.B. Thank you very much. And now Betty Robinson will read a proclamation on behalf of the Southfield Board of Education.
Proclamation to acknowledge Darryl J. Buchanan in honor of outstanding service as his Southfield Board of Education trustee, September 9, 2014. Whereas Darryl J. Buchanan is a talented advocate for public education and served as a trustee of the Southfield Board of Education since April 2005. Whereas Darryl has obtained the Master Platinum Award for M.A.S.B. due to his diligence in attendance, M.A.S.B. slash CBA classes, in order to become as knowledgeable as possible in all areas of the responsibilities of a member of the Board of Education and of his leadership as president of the crew board, the entire crew board attains honor board status and receives the M.A.S.B. Award of Excellence for their collective superior efforts. And whereas Darryl diligently serves as a mentor for students who are in the greatest need of strength and understanding and has been instrumental in involving fellow members of the community in this endeavor, including co-founding a nonprofit organization that includes a basketball program for male youth, and as a result of participating in this program, many young men have received scholarships, networked with business and community leaders, and are motivated to attain higher levels of education. And whereas Darryl has served as vice president of the Michigan Association of School Boards, Board of Directors, and also served on the Michigan State University Extension Leadership Council of Oakland County, and he also served as president of the Michigan Caucus of Black School Board Members. And whereas Darryl's enthusiasm for academic enrichment provides inspiration to others while focusing on improving student achievement and serving the community, and he continuously encourages community and parent participation through business partnerships and promotes initiatives that increase resources for schools. Now therefore being proclaimed that Mr. Darryl J. Buchanan is recognized for his exceptional sacrifice and service to Southfield Public Schools students, parents, and the community, presented on this ninth day of September 2014 on behalf of the Southfield Public Crew District. Dr. Linda Steve Woods, Superintendent, the current CATS president, Southfield Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. That gives you just a capsule of what Mr. Buchanan has done for this community. You just don't know how much he's done. Now, the Michigan Association of School Boards has sent a letter acknowledging Mr. Buchanan's service, and I would like to read that letter to you. At Southfield Public Schools, Darryl Buchanan has been a true advocate and champion for public education. He has admirably served the community and students of the Southfield Public School District for the past decade. During his time on the Board of Education Board of Directors for the Michigan Association of School Boards, Darryl has led by example. His positive attitude, his drive to succeed, and his commitment to always put his students first are infectious. He has served on M.A.S.B. boards since 2009 and has been one of the organization's most active board members. In his five years of service through our Board of Directors, Darryl has attended four annual leadership conferences, dozens of CBA courses, and was recently honored with the Master Platinum Award after completing his Level 6 certification of Board Member Training. Darryl has been active in our Urban Conference and served on many M.A.S.B. committees. He is an example of what every board member should strive to be, someone who is passionate for learning, passionate for public education, and passionate for student achievement. We thank him for his service and wish him well in future endeavors. Sincerely, Kathy Hayes, Executive Director, Michigan Association of School Boards. And that gives you an idea of what Mr. Buchanan is going to us. His absence will leave a hole in the school board. So, I would like to read the directions for the school board, people who wish to apply for a school board. The Southfield Public School District is seeking application for the current position of the Southfield Board of Education. An individual will be appointed to fill the vacant position through December 31, 2014. Interested parties must submit a letter expressing interest in the board position and their qualifications for the position known later than 12 o'clock noon on Friday, September 12, 2014, to the district office to the attention of current CATS Board Presidents at the Southfield Board of Education, John W. English, Administrative Center located at 24661 Roger Road, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. Following a review of the submitted material, the board will schedule interviews with selected candidates. Not all applicants for the board vacancy will be interviewed. If you have any questions concerning the role of the Board of Education and/or the responsibilities of a board member, please contact Dr. Linda Wood, Superintendent of Schools, at 248-746-4366. I will repeat that, 248-746-4366. Or visit the Southfield Public Schools website at www.southfield.k12.m i.us. Thank you. And that finishes the end, that targets the school board. Next is staff and student recognition. Southfield High School student Newsweek list. The Southfield J. has won a Gallup Award for Excellence in High School Journalism. The award was based on last year's issues of the paper. Students received top ratings in all aspects of journalism, including writing, editing, design, and photography. Last year's editor-in-chief was Ariston Dawson, who is now studying journalism at Michigan State University. Congratulations to the students and staff at Southfield High School. And another award comes to our district. University High School Academy was recently recognized by Newsweek as one of the best high schools in the United States. It ranks number 19 on the list of top high schools. The school principal, Marcia Williams, are you here, Ms. Williams?
She is.
Is here with more information.
Good evening, everybody. This is really great news for our learning community. We received notification in August, they wanted a picture of the building because we had been listed as a breakout school. Last school year, we were ranked number 603 in the country. This year, we're ranked number 123, number 19 in the Midwest. We're also once again first place in the county in terms of our students' academic performance. And what we have to do is submit a series of data to Newsweek Magazine in regards to our enrollment, the number of students who qualify for free and reduced price lunch, number of advanced placement courses that we offer, our students composite score on the AP examinations, ACT tests, et cetera. So there's a variety of information, then they send back emails asking us for more data, depending on what we send. So we're really happy to be in the top 25 in the Midwest. We're a good company, and we were really happy to make the jump, such a large jump, okay? Great news for our community. We're happy.
Now we have the report of the student board representatives. We have four new representatives this year, 2014, '15 school year. First we have Ms. Shana, Shana or Shayna? Shayna Hodge, Southfield Regional Academic Campus. This side?
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Dr. Linda Wood, Central Office Staff and Administrators, Southfield School Staff, Parents, Students, and Kids. My name is Shayna Hodge, and I am your second board member from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. What did the birthday at school look like for your student? If your student attended Southfield Regional Academic Campus, then he attended a college fair, listened to career-based presentations, and sat long-term academically. In addition, pinned denso engineers and shared their pathway to success on the birthday at school. Today, I'm announcing the Principal's Book Challenge, a challenge that was created by Mr. Boder to address the learner-centered problem known as the LCP, if you're familiar with that database language. The purpose of the Principal's Book Challenge is to focus on the entire learning community, students, teachers, support staff, and administrators. Every month, participants will read a book as of his or her choice, submit SQ3R evidence of completion, and a one-page written summary. Participants will then qualify for ongoing raffles. We encourage you to join our monthly book challenge. Attitude, attendance, academics are the foundation of the Principal's reward advantage. At Southfield Regional Academic Campus, we are focusing on what do we do right? What do students do right? And taking the time to celebrate patterns of success, weekly, eight staff members will nominate a student who demonstrates growth in his or her attendance, attitude, and academics. In closing, I have two dates for you to put into your calendar. First, please join us tomorrow night for our open house at Southfield Regional Academic Campus. We are located at 201705 Evergreen Road. Secondly, October 8 is our 14th Annual College Fair. Have a good evening and thank you for your time.
Now we have Ms. Brianna Richardson, Southfield Lakeford High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brianna Richardson, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Southfield Lakeford Chargers. Beginning our 2014 school year, all of the students are doing a great job at adapting to our new healthy lifestyles in school. Beth, along with students of the school store class, has been doing research on different healthy foods that meet the federal and district guidelines. Over the summer, we held an international faculty boot camp on July 1st. We had students attend Thompson's middle-year program, incoming freshmen, and also current Southfield Lakeford students to prepare for the upcoming Ivy Year. This week, September 8th, is National Honor Society Eligibility Week. Current NHS members will be completing various activities to get possible candidates to be more aware of NHS and being involved in such a wonderful leadership role. This week, Monday and Tuesday, the Southfield Lakeford Dance Department held auditions for their dance team and also Ivy Dance Company. Students ninth through 11th grade have begun their math testing this week. The week of September 22nd through 26th is our Spirit Week, which has been arranged by our student government. The theme that they have chosen is Walt Disney. The actual homecoming dance will be September 27th. Meet the Teachers and Curriculum Nights will be held next Wednesday, September 17th at 6:00 p.m. So far, in our athletics, the varsity football team is 1-1. The next game is this Friday versus Birmingham Girls at our home field at 4:30 p.m. This past weekend, on September 5th and 6th, the varsity choir attended their annual Advanced Choir Fall Retreat at Camp Camaret. They engaged in mini icebreakers and group activities for the new members to interact with returning choir members. Thank you all for your time, and I look forward to sharing more information on Southfield Lakeford's upcoming events. Have a wonderful night.
Ms. Aries Rutledge from the University High School Academy.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out tonight. I am Aries Rutledge, and I'll be presenting the latest news at the U. This year, we have 487 students, that's the combined total of the U-PED and U-HSA, 56 of whom are eighth graders and 135 of whom are ninth graders. August 13, we have our eighth-grade transition program, which was hosted by M.A.H.S., M.A.S.B. And the following day, August 14, we had our ninth-grade transition program, which was hosted by U-HSA StuCo. And this was student-led, and both of these events allowed students to get a day in the life at the U and really connect with the school. We had a great turnout that night, August 14, at our annual back-to-school picnic. This upcoming week, September 10 through 12, is our Spirit Week. Wednesday will be pajama day, Thursday will be nerd day, and Friday will be spirit color day. September 12, we will have our pep rally, and this is all to encourage school spirit. September 13, we will have our 90's-themed icebreaker dance hosted by the Class Board of 2016. Like mentioned earlier, the rankings at the U are spectacular. We're number one, we're the number one school in Oakland County tied with Novi. We're number 19, and we're the number 90th school in the Midwest, and we're the number 128th school in the country. The last three classes averaged over a 22 on the ACC. On behalf of the U-HSA and the Class of 2015 Board, we present the new superintendent, Dr. Wood, with the senior jersey.
And now, last but not least.
On the jersey, it says first class because we will be your first graduating class this year, and you're a first-class lady.
Ms. Lauren Williams, Southfield High School.
Hello, everyone. How are you? Good. I'd like to give a special thanks to the Board of Education and all the parents who came out tonight. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Lauren Williams, and it is an honor and a privilege to be the student representative for Southfield High this year. As of the current date, Southfield High School has enrolled 998 students, which is 38 more students than last year. Due to the success of our ninth-grade academy, SHS is now offering single-gender ninth and 10th-grade core classes. Southfield High has made a healthier change to the vending machines as well by taking away all the unhealthy choices. And many students aren't happy about it. Southfield High also held their first gender-based Blue Jays meeting today. The football team started off the season slow, 21-19 loss at Orchard Lake as a prep kickoff class that held at Wayne State University. The Blue Jays bounced back quickly last week on September 6, defeating Rochester Adams with 35-0. The football team hosts Royal Oak High School this Friday at 4:30 for their first home game of the season. The Lady Jays volleyball team got off to a great start, defeating Hamtramck in three straight sets, 35-18, 25-9, and 25-15. The Lady Jays will also host Avondale this Thursday, starting at 4:30 for the freshmen and concluding with the varsity and the nightcap. Southfield High School hosted their Curriculum Night, and a new parent meeting will on Monday, September 8. The meeting was well-attended with over 135 families representing their students. On Monday, September 15, Southfield High School will host their first PCSA meeting of the year. We look forward to seeing you there to see how we can work as partners and make this school year outstanding. I would also thank everyone in for giving me this opportunity to represent my school. Let's go Southfield.
Thank you, ladies, for those wonderful reports. We look forward to more. You're up there. And now we have the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you. And good evening, board, good evening, community, parents. I just have to say, probably for the last time in the past two weeks, welcome back to school. We are so excited as we celebrate the beginning of this new school year. I visited so many schools on opening day, and what I saw was excitement. I saw teachers prepared and students ready to learn. I felt this was one of the best openings ever, and I've visited so many of the children and sawed in their eyes and sawed in the eyes of the staff. So exciting ways and exciting things ahead. Another very exciting and special day was August 25th. It is when we had our opening day kickoff for staff at Southfield Lakeford High School. We echoed the theme, let's celebrate what's right. As you have already heard tonight, we have some wonderful students, we have some wonderful schools, and we're so excited about all of them. And so at our opening day for the staff this year, I wanted students to address all of our teachers, our administrators, our secretaries, our paraprofessionals, our support staff, and maintenance workers. I wanted our entire Southfield Public Schools staff and community to witness the fruit of our labor, to be reminded that because of this collective work, our students succeed, and together we make a difference in the lives of students, and when we work with our parents, tremendous success can be achieved. Michael Barconi, a 2014 graduate of University High School Academy, and Derek Carter, a 2014 Ortorical Contest winner from Thompson. And I have to say, he shared that just a few years and months prior, he was really afraid to engage in public speaking. But I'm telling you, those two gentlemen brought tears to adults. They filled us with tremendous levels of pride because these are our students. These two young men graced the stage at Southfield Lakeford High School, commanded our attention, and filled our hearts and minds with inspiration, that we must still keep making a difference. We must still see the potential in all of our students. They reminded us that all of our students are not coming always from perfect homes, but as Michael Barconi stated, he is grateful for the village. It takes all of us. It takes parents, teachers, staff, and our community at large to help our children succeed, and hearing this from our students was so powerful. So I'm asking everyone here today and our Southfield community at large, so let's celebrate what's right with our students and our schools. I am so proud of our students and Southfield Public Schools, and I say that with the depth from my heart as we commence this school year because I truly believe and know that every one of our children are gems, and it is our job as the staff and the individuals who are partaking the instruction and providing that instruction to make the difference with each and every one of them. So thank you, parents, thank you, community, thank you, board, as we move forward in this school year. The next thing I'd like to mention is, over the phone, one of the first financial contributions that I received as superintendent on behalf of the district was from Priority Health. Priority Health recently moved to Southfield, and they made a sizable contribution to us, supporting our schools and programming to the amount of $10,000. I'd like to publicly thank Priority Health and invite Mr. Dan Whittaker to come to the podium and to share with us about Priority Health and what you plan to do in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Wood. Good evening, everybody. At Priority Health, we're a health plan committed to improving the health and lives of the people that we serve. And we're Michigan-based, and we provide innovative and cost-effective solutions to people looking to purchase individual health insurance policies, seniors looking for that right Medicare plan, and employers who purchase coverage on behalf of their workforce. Truly, all of our solutions provide a healthier approach to healthcare. I'm proud to say that at Priority Health, one of our core corporate philosophies is to support the community that our employees both live and work in. And as we recently moved to Southfield, we planned a celebration announcing that move, and we knew it was the right thing to do to make a contribution to the Southfield Public Schools. We can see the linkage between supporting the health, medicine, and fitness activities in the school system, as well as our mission to improve the health and lives of the people we serve. We look forward to working together for future opportunities with the Southfield Public School and trying to find future partnerships. So best wishes on a successful school year, and thank you very much for having us.
Another partner that I'd like to introduce, and I'd like to share as a preface of it, there's a long legacy of success and achievements for so many of the students that are enrolled in Detroit Free Area College Engineering Program, which most of us have heard as DASPA. I am pleased to announce that they will begin partnering, or that we will begin partnering with DASPA to offer STEM programming for students in grades 3K through 3, and they will be right here with us in Southfield at Southfield High School on Saturdays. I'd like to invite Mr. Jason Lee to the podium to share with us and our parents about our new DASPA partnership and what programming our little ones will receive. Thank you.
Well, good evening. This is exciting for us, a little bit of history. DASPA's been around for 38 years here in southeast Michigan, and with Dr. Cook Robinson, was the first time that Southfield Public Schools became a member of the DASPA Board of Directors. And we're glad to continue that legacy with Dr. Wood and have Southfield represented on our board because because Detroit Area Pre-Collegiate Engineering Program is truly to-date Detroit Area Pre-Collegiate Engineering Program. So really excited about that. Uh, next slide. Uh, real quick, uh, DASIP is Detroit Area Pre-Collegiate Engineering Program. We're a nonprofit, uh, but we provide educational programs in and out of school. A lot of people recognize us, uh, for, there used to be this real big event at Cobal Hall, parents waiting in line from 5:00 AM for an 8:00 AM registration. We don't even do that anymore. Our process is online, we're using the technology. And because the technology that's here in Southfield is the reason that we are able to provide the program that we were going to talk about soon. Just some quick demographics, uh, we are, uh, when I first came to DASIP about 10 years ago, we were 90% Detroit residents. That has definitely changed. Uh, Southfield is actually 90% of our student population, um, and increasing. We're excited about that. And we're getting kids from all over the, um, Wayne, Oakland County, participating in our program. 50% of our students are girls. So we talk about women in STEM. We provide educational opportunities and they're really doing very well in STEM programming. If you go to our Facebook page, uh, the, uh, uh, young lady in the front on the, uh, I forgot what it's called. The, uh, on, on the cover page is actually a Southfield student from University High School and she participated in a pilot program on mobile, uh, programming. And we're really excited about that. So go to our Facebook fan page and you'll see who's from Southfield right over there. So what, uh, Dr. Wood is, uh, talking about is, DASIP is bringing to Southfield what we call the Explorers Program. And the Explorers Program is based off of a curriculum called Fast Track Kids. And we are providing this opportunity and it's really about getting young people excited about learning at their early ages. We all know education foundation starts from, actually at birth. But we want to get kids excited about learning, we want to get kids in particular excited about STEM field because we know that that's the area, that's, that's where our future is. Uh, so the Explorers Program, um, we actually have a quick video and, uh, one, two.
The DASIP Explorers Program is for pre-K and third grade students and it opens the child's world to the wonders of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. With a curriculum consistent with national education standards, the Explorers Program is designed to develop key school and life-ready skills such as critical thinking, creativity, confidence, communication, and collaboration. These skills are explored through subjects ranging from astronomy to biology to economics. Throughout each session, the students work closely with instructors using smart boards and exciting hand con screen to understand the how, the what, and the why of their experiments. In the DASIP Explorers Program, learning is fun. Each activity is an educational building block preparing children for life inside and outside the classroom.
I am a DASIP Explorer.
I am a DASIP Explorer.
I'm a DASIP Explorer.
I am a DASIP Explorer.
So we followed that program, uh, at a, uh, at a charter school in Detroit and we decided that we wanted to move it. And, uh, one of the pieces, one of the, the main components, uh, was the technology had to be in the classroom. And Southfield had smart boards in its high schools and that allowed us to, to, to provide this opportunity here in Southfield. Uh, so we're really excited about that. Uh, and kudos to you for having the technology because you may think that having smart boards is something that every school has. Trust me, it is not. So our schedule, uh, we're currently registering, uh, students and you can go to the DASIP website, which is dasip.org, uh, to find out more information about the program. There is a cost associated with this program. Uh, it's essentially, it's a hundred dollars a month. It's a two-month program and, uh, students will be able to start on September 20th and go to November 8th. Uh, there's two sessions. We know that Saturdays are busy for parents, football, soccer, cheer, dance, whatever the case may be. So we have two timeframes. We have a 9 to 10:30 and we have 11 to 12:30. And the program is going to be right here at Southfield High School. So we know you can get here. So we're looking forward to it. We have plenty of capacity and if you have any questions, please call the DASIP office. And, uh, and the information, uh, is on our website, so the number's 313-831-3050. Looking forward to having you here in Southfield. Oh, in addition to our pre-K to third grade programs, we're also registering for our regular DASIP Saturday classes. We don't do the whole Cobal Hall, uh, going at 3,000 people anymore. It's a hundred percent online. You can do everything from start to finish online, the application. So we utilize the technology, we make it more convenient for parents to put their kids in the program. It's $25 and that, that investment's going to last a lifetime.
Thank you, uh, Sheriff Lee. Um, I want to just say that we have many exciting things going on. DASIP has been a tremendous asset in our community in the past and we have programming at Lawrence currently, yes. And so we're just grateful to be able to expand it here in our home and for our children hopefully to partake in this program. The next thing under my agenda, I have a call on this evening, is I, I looked around. I thought I had the book right here, but I have a book in my office that's called Lost in the Woods. And I'm getting ready for the beginning of our celebrity reader program. I'm going to be going out to read that book. And it is a tremendous gift to read to young people and they are so excited when you read to them. I just wanted to share to all of our current wonderful celebrity readers, because I know a few of you already called, that we're about to get started and I want to let you know that it's going to be moving right along. Uh, we have, we'll be launching our celebrity program. And if you were not a part of our celebrity readers last year, we're going to be looking for you to join us this year. And, uh, if you have any questions, uh, as we get ready to start our launch, please feel free to contact Elise Collier in the Division of Instruction. Now, I want to successfully connect with all of our parents in this district. Um, it's very important that we are able to communicate with each of you and with all of our parents for all of our wonderful students. So I'd like for Ms. Jacqueline Robinson to come to the podium and to address how we're going to and the process of relaunching our MyStar Parent Connection program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening board, superintendent, cabinet, and audience. You see I stall for time. Uh, while I'm sitting, this board of, uh, Mr. Wee was speaking on the technology that the district currently has. And on that note, on that note, if you didn't catch it, we had, um, two articles in both the pre-press. And this is, um, hold on, Class District Cabinet. So this was based on our district. We led the story and we actually gave the story to the media. And then on the 9th, the same day that Detroit News, Students and Students Wired for Success. And these articles cover, um, our, not only our smart boards, but our Apple TVs in each classroom, uh, digital overhead projectors, eBooks for all of our high school students in the core classes, and the investments the district has made in upgrading its technology so that our students can remain current and succeed and, uh, be leaders in this world. So I have a very short presentation for you today. So the district has launched a campaign, Get Connected and Stay Connected. And we are doing this because it's vitally important that we communicate with all of our parents and keep you up to date on everything that's happening. And we want to reintroduce MyStar Parent Connection. The campaign runs from September 8th to September 31st and really is ongoing because we want to make sure we have information and can connect with you in a number of ways. Our overall goal is to ensure that we can voice message you, email you, and text every family in the district. And we want to share information with you. Now there are many wonderful things that occur in the district as Dr. Wood mentioned and I'll name a few. Sometimes we want to talk about student accomplishments, educator awards which are numerous, the acquisition of new technology in eBooks. Sometimes we have great things like free tickets to the Pistons game. Did any of you attend the Pistons game last year? Oh yeah, okay. Or maybe a free day at Cranbrook Museum, which the district offers. And sometimes there are things that are not so pleasant like power outages, broken boilers, snow days depending on if you're an adult or a child, or maybe both. And building lockdowns for various reasons. And so in all of these areas, we want to just make sure that we can communicate with you that there are no barriers and no hindrances to communication. And this campaign is our engaging and fun way to encourage everybody to sign up. So what we want parents to do is if you haven't signed up or received your login and ID information for Parent Connect, we want you to do that. Um, if you have done it, we want you to go in and update if there's been a change in your email address or your phone number. And so, uh, just a few of the features of the campaign is, we have, uh, we have a wonderful team, uh, many people on that team and they're here. Now if you were working on this Parent Connect team, raise your hand. I see you in the audience, don't be shy. So we have a real big team and Ms. Collier is not here and she led up that team. But, um, we have representatives for Parent Connect at each school. Each parent is going to get a letter, uh, this week that has information about Parent Connection and who your representative is. So we want to make sure you can, uh, log in and get information. And you see on the board in front of you, there's information, that's around here, as you read by the board. You can get timely updates from your, your teacher, receive information, view grades, test scores, records, view lunch balances, check attendance, records, and so much more. So this is a great, really great tool for you to use to keep you in the know. At open house, you'll see kiosks. So for each school, there'll be a kiosk, you'll see this board, and there'll be a table set up and a laptop to help you retrieve your login or if you don't have it, to get your login and ID. And so we want to help you make sure that you can connect. In addition, each school will have special incentives for the children who, the families who participate. So those incentives are determined by the schools. It could be addressed down there or some other incentive just to make sure that everyone participates. Other changes we've made is the Parent Connection website has been updated to include a video that gives you instructions and to include information about the program. There'll be more links, Q&amp;A links, and other information. And if there's an issue with the system, we can message you right here, right here on this website. So our goal, as Dr. Wood said, is to get connected and stay connected. And we are working together to make sure that each of our children has the bright future that they so richly deserve. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson, how, uh, what was the impact for those grandparents who raise the kids who do not have confused at home? Do not have access to them? How will we communicate with them and keep them abreast of what's going on in the district?
We still, because we know everyone is not wired, we still do the old-fashioned direct mail and we still do voice messaging. Even today, the information that went out, went out, uh, by letter. So we've been sending out letters and information. And we also do voicemail and on our, um, uh, you know, I was going to say on our website. But even if they're not on the website, they'll receive direct mail, they'll receive voice messages. And at the school, the teacher will share information.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Well, the last part of my report, um, is to update our community and we will have, uh, some additional assistance for me with this part. But at the beginning of the school year, we all know that there may be a few transportation issues and concerns. Across the country, on the first day of school, as much as we try to make everything perfect, um, and make sure that everything is unfolding the way we have planned and we want it to occur, we, uh, know that there may be a few transportation issues. However, having a student to the board at the incorrect spot is really not acceptable for us. And we are currently reviewing procedures and are taking steps to ensure that this does not occur again. The district transports over 4,500 students daily on our school buses and we are extremely committed to their safety. So I've asked, uh, representatives from Durham to come here this evening to share with our board and to share with our community, uh, some procedures that they are putting in place, some reviews that they have occurred, and some actions that they are taking. Thank you, Mr. John Neil and Tiffany Howard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Durham School Services has 11, 11 locations in Michigan. We service about 22,000 students. Southfield is the first in Michigan, next with Birmingham, to outsource. We have been, uh, servicing here since 2008. We log over 800,000 miles a year. We have been recognized as a Class A safety in the Great Lakes region, which is our region, with the 11 in the Ohio region and some Pennsylvania, as one of the best safety records, uh, in Durham. Last year, Antonio King, one of our Southfield drivers, got the Driver of the Year award and was sent to Las Vegas, uh, because of his service picking up a home, uh, a child who ran away from home. But, and we're always listening to the community to see how we can do things better. And that's, that's why I'm here, because we can always do things better. We were looking at some of the things we do hands-on and we think we can, uh, we think we can do some enhanced technologies. We're looking into, uh, improving some safety with this enhanced technology. Scanning devices for kids, pre-trip and post-trip scanning, uh, basically updating the equipment that we have that tracks everything through satellite, through GPS, direct time, on-time reporting. And using cutting-edge technology that, that is available to track kids, track buses, and letting you know to parents where the buses are at all times or the administration. Now, I'm not going to be the one to tell you about the construction alerts, but this year we have had some construction we did not plan on. I mean, we knew it was here, some of it was supposed to be completed, some of it is not completed. Especially Evergreen, it's been real brutal for us. But I think one of the problems too is, you know, when we sent out our buses to do their pre-trip, that's what we call the, um, practice runs or dry runs, we get them out there in the mornings to do their runs, AM and PM routes. The first, or the last two weeks of August, you'll see buses going around empty, just learning their routes. I think we had a big problem this year because there was no traffic. And we thought, okay, this is great. You know, the runs were running pretty much on time than we thought, but that was without all the 696 traffic, the 96 traffic, all the mile roads traffic, throwing everything off. It took, uh, one of my buses, eight stop reds to get through, to get to Adler yesterday. That's eight stops waiting in traffic and waiting in, you know, when you're on the clock and you want to get there before the school lets out, it's very stressful. Having said all that, we're working on rerouting some things, uh, and moving forward. Uh, daily, we, we reroute to make the best decisions on the ground. Evergreen is open and shut and Civic Center is open and shut. It's hard to know daily what's going on. It's hard to get the communication from, uh, construction. Uh, but we are holding up to take safety meetings with our drivers. And by the way, this is, uh, Ms. Tiffany Lewis. She's my new safety and trainer supervisor. She's been a driver and trainer with Southfield for six years. So we promoted her up and she's, uh, she's been a wonderful this first week of school. So, thank you Tiffany. She's been holding these drive, these meetings with the drivers to make sure that we're hitting our targets. We've eliminated some unnecessary stops and we're promising to return calls to parents within 12 hours. Sometimes we get 300 calls in an hour. And we, we've added five additional lines, but it's still hard to get to everybody. Uh, I've made a lot of new friends on email, so that's real nice too. So we're getting emails and we're getting stuff, uh, done. Uh, one of the things we have been very good at is contacting the principals if there will be delays. We, uh, we are going to contact the principals and make sure that they know what bus and what route is, is being delayed for traffic or a breakdown. So that's, that's something we're looking into. Safety is our number one priority. I have to tell you, that's all we talk about is safety during the, the pre-trip, post-trip, all our meetings. Our drivers, uh, spend a lot of time in classrooms, uh, behind-the-wheel training. Tiffany will not let somebody go on the road unless they are trained and she feels confident in their abilities. Having said that, unfortunately, if there are incidents, we review the fact. And I want to personally apologize. And I want to personally apologize to the community and specifically to the parents of the kindergartner that was dropped off two blocks, or two stops before she was supposed to be dropped off. The driver did not follow procedures as far as we can tell. We're not sure, we're still reviewing the whole thing, but that's unacceptable and I apologize. That's, we've never lost a child, we're not going to start. And I stay up night thinking about these things. So if there's anything, if there's anything I can do, again, I apologize, it won't happen again, not on my watch, and all the drivers know. And everybody's been getting down to business this last two days since we found out about this. Let me go back and run, I'm sorry. We basically have a procedure that we follow. If something, if we can't find a kid, radio communication stop, we, we do the, you know, we back our tracks, figure out where the child is. Usually it's, somebody picked him up early or, there's always an explanation, but once in a while, something like this happens and we won't, we won't allow it. And we do the research and we make sure we hold as ever accountable, accountable, including termination, immediate termination. We've, we've fired four drivers so far this year since startup that have been six working days because they just, they're not following the standards that we set. And we set them pretty high. So again, I apologize if you've been stressed as parents, I understand. And we will, within the next twenty-four hours, I think we'll have ninety-nine percent of all the issues ironed out, except for the traffic, I can only do so much. But these are our contact information, those are our phone numbers, jmail@durhamschoolservices.com and tlois2@durhamschoolsservices.com. We'll be happy to answer your phone calls if you have any questions. And we're here for you, we're here for the community. So thank you very much for your time and we'll be here if you have any other questions after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, and thank you again, Ms. Mill and Ms. Lewis and Ms. Trent, because we have been a team over the last few days, daily, monitoring and recording everything that we're hearing. And the unfortunate thing is that we, we had, we had a few problems. But I will say that those corrections that we made, we're looking at how we can most definitely enhance what's happening on the bus and the appropriate actions regarding staff will occur as we move forward. So with that said, thank you. And again, from the district perspective, I have called parents, apologized myself, that I don't want any child to be left behind or dropped off or anything. Safety is so critical. And, and so every child that is here in this district, I feel like I have seven thousand children. And so consequently, my heart breathes when I'm taking a few extra moments to find out in that moment of time where a child is. So do know that we are all with you and we support you and we're working with Durham and they are working with us to make sure that all of our children stay. That's high school and elementary, so that their issues can be resolved. With that, that concludes my report for this evening. And I'd like to turn it over.
Good evening. Tonight, we have Wes Prescott from our ITC department here to give you an update on all of the many, many changes and updates that they have done over the summer.
Welcome back, everyone. Hi. Looking forward to the, to the upcoming school year. I thank you for the opportunity to come and share some of the projects that we've had undertaken over the summer. We've been working with Southfield for about a year now and implemented quite a few different technologies to kind of position the district in a, in a place for success. And those things that we've done over the past year have really led up to the projects that we, we had going on over the summer. We have a listing of the projects that we, we had undertaken over the summer and I'll go ahead and explain each of those. But we migrated to a Common Active Directory platform, which allows us to more streamline account creation, account management, and make sure, make sure data and information is flowing smoothly. We upgraded to Windows Seven, which again, I'll go into each of these in more detail. We had an iPad rollout for staff. We did a capital refresh of many of the computers within the district. We implemented Gmail and we also upgraded the security system. Again, this is a document that, that we've shared many times, working with Southfield, we've come up with a three-year IT roadmap. We're currently in the fourteen, fifteen school year and many of the items from over the past two years, thirteen, fourteen and fourteen, fifteen, we're happy to say we've completed by the end of this summer. We're finishing up and tidying up a little bit, but we, we're in a good position. We've put in a lot of work in the past year to really position Southfield to put them in a good place. So the migration to Open Schools Active Directory was really a reconfiguration of the network to enhance support, support that we can provide to both staff and students. It allows for synchronized data centers between Southfield and Open Schools. It's a way for redundancy and backup in case there's ever an issue at one location, the data, both student and staff is secured in another. Data integration between MyStar and Active Directory for user account creation. The process that we have in place to create nine thousand accounts on a yearly basis, it can be fairly cumbersome, but we integrate nicely with the student information system and the HR system to be able to create those more efficiently. This process has also helped us to, I guess, provide a centralized service desk tool. We've really been able to streamline support. Instead of somebody calling the service desk and then getting reassigned to one of the techs at Southfield, most of the calls can be handled, or most of the issues can be resolved right on the phone. It takes a minute or two as opposed to a couple hours. So we've really enhanced the response time to any issues that arise. We've also eliminated the need for Southfield to upgrade its server infrastructure from Server 2003 to Server 2012. In a minute, I'll speak about Windows XP and its end-of-life for support and updates, which was April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Server 2003 had that same end-of-life. So we, by the migration to Open Schools Active Directory, that server infrastructure was already in place and there wasn't a cost or a need for Southfield to incur that upgrade. We had a Windows Seven implementation. As we've talked about in the past, Southfield, all computers were previously running Windows XP, which again, had an end-of-life date of April fifteenth of two thousand and fourteen, where again, they provided no updates, no support for, for that operating system. So it was necessary to, to upgrade. We upgraded over the summer about forty-five hundred devices to Windows Seven. That in itself was a large undertaking. We worked many, many long nights to get that done, but I'm happy to say we did. We also had an iPad rollout. We started this mid-sprout, late spring of last year, where our goal was to provide an iPad for every teacher in every classroom. We worked with the Division of Instruction and the Superintendent's Office to determine a base level of technology for every classroom and an iPad was part of that. So we were able to distribute many of the iPads prior to the staff leaving for break. We really wanted them to have the opportunity over the summer to play around, get comfortable with it and be able to come back ready to go. Keeping with that theme, not all staff were able to stop by to get one up over summer or before summer break, so we had some times over the summer where we were open for staff to get by. We also offered various levels of training throughout the summer that were optional, where staff could come in. We have an instructional technology specialist who provided some training. I provided some as well and we'll continue to provide those throughout the year to support the staff and the use of the technology within the classroom. We also talked about a capital refresh. Over the summer, we replaced approximately a thousand computers. Southfield previously had had about seventy, seventy-five percent of the devices that were between five and eight years old. The refresh cycle for a computer is typically every five years. You want to recycle that out and, and get rid of your oldest devices. So our, our refresh allowed us to eliminate the oldest devices. We shuffled things around so we were, we were able to make that happen. There are still some devices that fall in that five to eight-year range. Those, the majority of those are laptops, that are on laptop cards and we are looking at ways to, another refresh cycle to, to address that. Within the thousand computers, we did replace all teacher workstations. One of our goals, again, is to ensure that the classroom technology that supports the teachers, to allow them to provide quality instruction that's up-to-date and effective. So we gave every teacher an improvement. We also replaced one computer lab in every building. With the implementation of high-stakes online testing, it's important to have a reliable device for students to be able to sit down in front of and complete, complete an assessment and know that that device is, is going to be reliable. It's essential for the students and for the staff that are administering this advance for assessment. Right at the beginning of the summer, we implemented Gmail as the email platform. Southfield was previously running on Exchange, which again, was end-of-life in April two thousand and fourteen, the version of Exchange that they were, that we were running. So prior to that, we looked at what are some of the other options. Google Apps for Education provided many benefits to Southfield. It provides the students and staff with access to Google Drive, Google Classroom, in addition to email. There's quite a few other features that are probably too numerous to get into this evening. It allows for increased collaboration between staff and students. It also provides distance learning opportunities for staff and students. Staff and students can connect with other classrooms around the country, around the world and really enhance learning opportunities. We did provide drop-in training as staff returned. We had our facility open for staff to come in and get assistance with logging in, with how to send an email, how to find their calendar, all those sorts of things. We also held trainings throughout the summer. I had several trainings in this room for the administrative staff and for other support staff that could attend. And we also were in buildings every day leading up to the beginning of school, really trying to provide that support so the teachers were comfortable as they returned. One of our other large undertakings that was actually completed in the spring was the Milestone implementation. Previously, this was an upgrade to the security system and the software that is used to access the security cameras. Previously, Southfield had access to security cameras through about six different platforms. Milestone allows the cameras to be viewed on a single pane of glass. So you pull up one program and you can see all the cameras that you're supposed to be able to see. We migrated about five hundred and fifty cameras from the various systems to the Milestone platform. And again, it allows the cameras to be viewed securely from anywhere with internet access. If you have a phone, an iPad, a computer, and you have the necessary, necessary security credentials, you're able to access the cameras. And again, that's enterprise-level security, so we're not, there's, there isn't the opportunity for somebody to gain access, there shouldn't. And it increases the ability to respond in the event of a person's. And that's really all we did this summer. So again, again, we, we had, we had a large undertaking. We knew it was going to be a large undertaking, but it really needed to be done to put Southfield in, in a position to, to be ready for, for some of the things that are coming. So I appreciate the support and the patience of everybody, the staff and students. It's been, it's been a hectic opening, a couple of weeks, but, but it's going well. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
It's a comment, Mr. Prescott. I was telling someone earlier, she said that second most popular and well-known name is Southfield.
Oh. It's like, oh Wes.
I get, I get that every now and then. Oh, you're Wes. I need to send out a picture with.
Thank you for our training as well.
All right.
Thank you for our training and board.
Oh, no problem. And again, you guys have our number?
And I'd just like to say before you leave that I had the opportunity along with our Vice President Smith and some of my other board members to go out to the building and actually see some of that in the buildings. I was amazed and used it, our students, kindergarten, first graders. I hate to say this, but some of them are a little smarter than I am. What was asked, is this an adjective? Is this an adverb? It's canon point that. Boy, is it a now. What would you say? Thank you for those educated, I was getting quiet. I had to remember, person, place or thing, now. So I appreciate the technology and I appreciate the parents that are working with their students and totally involved in their education, helping them to move forward. Because you can't think just here in Southfield, you have to think work generally. You have to think globally. I'm sure when I get home, I'll come out. All going. See, I'm sure I'll get some emails from China and other places, but that's what you have to do in our students, can and will be. Thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you, everyone.
And that's all of my report. The rest is in the consent agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For Human Resources, I have asked the new instrumental music band directors for the high school to come and I would like to introduce them to you at this time. And as I introduce you, if you make your way up to the podium, just to give them some of your background. So first, from Southfield Lakewood High School is James Charles, the new instrumental music band teacher for this year.
I had to, we were out on the field earlier today and I had to come back in and change so I can make it up here to the board, go up to meet everyone, meet the board members, say hi to the superintendent and Ms. Lou Brer as well. I am the new band director, director of band for Southfield Lakewood. My name is James Charles. I'm originally from Detroit, Michigan, ninety-seven graduate of Central High School. I've been gone for quite a while.
Where were you?
Detroit Central.
Detroit.
Detroit. And after, after Detroit, I went to Southern University in Baton Rouge, Indiana. That's where I received my bachelor's of music education. Then after that, went to Boston University, received my master's and recently completed my PhD study from Capella University. So that's where I was. Really thank you. Well, I'm saying that prior to all my, my extended education, graduating from Detroit, I always had the dream and desire to come back to Michigan and teach and to really pass on the aesthetic experience I had, the enjoyment of music that I received from my band director at Central. And Reston Sohe passed away about two, about three years ago, but because of him, I was able to make it down there. Not saying my parents didn't help, but it's pretty much I spent more of the time in bands than I was at home. I was, I've been, I've been gone for seventeen years and finally had the offer to return back home to Michigan. I was thinking when I got a call that it was position open up here. I was kind of like, you gotta be kidding me, there's no position open at Southfield. But when they told me it was and I did my little research, you know, it was a no-brainer for me to come and apply. And then I kind of beat myself down, like, okay, I'm not going to get a call. Next thing you know, I received a call and I was on the first thing smoking up here. So that's been a month. I made it up here, I forgot the day, it was on a Wednesday and I was at camp on that Thursday. So we've been out there, the band is growing. Right now, we're starting small. We have roughly about forty-five to fifty students. But I give or take, in about a year after they see us comes November, we'll probably have a hundred, a hundred fifty students a year from now. So it's great to be back home. Thanks again for inviting me up here. If you have any questions, if your child is in music and they want a nutrition, musical training, then we'll be soft and brief. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Christopher Coon is the instrumental music band director for Southfield High School.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. Been a long day, been at school since about seven o'clock this morning, so haven't gotten home yet. gotten home yet. But I'm very excited to be here. I know that there is a long tradition of excellence at Southfield High School when it comes to music education, and I'm just honored to be a part of it, and honored to just help grow the program and help continue and raise the level of excellence that's already been built there. I'm originally from Redford, Michigan. I went to Thurston High School and graduated from there in 2004. I went to Eastrop, Michigan University, where I got my bachelor's in music education. From there, I went to Albuquerque, New Mexico, where I taught high school band out there. Came back up here and taught for the last few years in Mount Morris, which is just north of Flint, and then now I'm here. So I'm very excited for the opportunity. It's been a very short timetable. I think this is maybe the beginning of week two and a half or something. So it's been very quick, but it's been great getting to know the students, getting to know the program, and they have a drive and enthusiasm for music that's infectious. And it's a lot of fun to be here and I just, I really appreciate, excuse me, appreciate the opportunity.
And everything else for Human Resources is contained within the consent agenda.
Good evening. My name is Paula Lysy, and I'd like to introduce two of the curriculum instructional cabinet members, and that is George Chapp, Director of Secondary Programs, and Alma Dean, Director of Elementary and K-8 Programs. And they're going to share with you tonight our transition to e-learning, our e-learning resources, also summer school, the status of our summer school, that's, apologies, Saturday, because summer is over. Saturday school and also the transition of our curricular materials. And also, for the first time in over eight years, the MEET, the State Assessment, will be held in the spring, which is a great opportunity to assess our children for what they've learned that year, not the prior year.
Good evening, everyone. Board, Superintendent, Cabinet, and Southfield community, thank you so much for allowing us the exciting opportunity to come and update you on our textbook adoption. We too have been busy this summer, so we can concur with our colleagues who have mentioned it. But we have good news as far as the update is concerned. We started with how our district is shifting. We are moving in a different direction. You heard Mr. Prescott talk about the transition to electronic materials, and we are right in the thick of things as far as that is concerned. Our learning is becoming more and more digital, and we are happy to announce that our e-text are almost, almost there. We're very, very close.
We're literally 95% there. We actually have deployed nearly 25,000 student accounts that we've been working on within the last several weeks, but really more intense weeks since the school year has begun. Students have shown up to the schools, teachers have, you know, been in the buildings. And the great part about it is that we are now at a place where K-12, those accounts are running, they are working. We are working in buildings to make sure our teachers have their e-accounts set up so they can sub their classes, and also we will be working to make sure that students and parents of the community have access to those accounts as well. In terms of district e-learning support, the Division of Instruction and Division, as we said, supporting teachers with their account setup will also be helping facilitate professional development throughout the fall of 2014 for our teachers, so they can have even a greater understanding than they already do as to resources that they can employ in the classrooms, certain tools students will be able to use. This is not just e-text, but this is also in tandem with this, what Mr. Prescott talked about, with Google Apps for Education, being able to more collaboratively with one another, sharing documents, doing live edits, presentations remotely. So it really goes beyond just the e-textbooks. And then finally, also working to coordinate parent outreach. We know that's something that's very important to members of the Board of Education, the superintendent, is that you as parents have the opportunity to not only be able to experience these e-textbooks and these materials, but also to support your child as well.
So, implementation by the numbers. We have 11 grade levels, four publishers for our content providers, 1,500 teacher e-text accounts, and approximately 20,000 student e-text accounts. And as George mentioned earlier, we are about 95% implemented as far as the students receiving their accounts. We have our PD facilitators, and George and myself were on the ground, were in buildings along with other staff members to make sure that the teachers have a comfortable understanding of how to access their materials online.
And I believe as someone said our associate superintendent the other day, Rome was not built in a day, but we are building Rome. We ask you for your patience. These accounts are active, but even for our students, our teachers, even in some cases for ourselves, and I've been around virtual instructional technology for quite a while, there is no county, and we've heard this from our publishing partners that worked with us in this adoption, there is no county in this state that has taken on core content area K-12 implementation. So we just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and doing it right, because we want our students and we want this community to have the very best experience with these e-learning materials.
Thank you.
And then, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Sorry. We just want to show a few pictures about the actual process itself. The picture to the right, yeah, to my, sorry, my left, is actually a picture of Adler Elementary School. These are materials, older materials that were actually, we allowed members of the community to come in, because of the vision of taxpayer dollars, you know, to be able to take home with your students, that were being retired as we brought in new curriculum materials. What you can see to the right are the brand-new boxes of materials that were shipped out from Eisenhower Elementary School. And that process took place from really the, you know, beginning of spring, March, all the way through the summertime. And again, some more pictures that we have here of these materials, professional learning that took place in June toward the end of the school year, where we had the opportunity for teachers to be able to take home these materials, to study, to review, to get comfortable with over the summertime. And I know that Alma and I have to say this publicly, there was a, literally an army of care professionals, teachers, members of the division, central office, that made the cataloging, barcoding, sorting, creating a classroom set, shipping of materials possible that really could not have happened without those individuals.
What you see here on the left, those were the teacher materials, because even though, as someone mentioned earlier, we understand that we are moving toward a digital era, we still have higher copy tax, and there are some teachers who appreciated that. So what we did, we opened up the building and allowed the teachers to come in over the summer, pick up their materials, and before, they had an opportunity to look at them over the summer, and before taking them home, the PD pitcher happened right on Friday at Eisenhower. So each of the publishers were able to give the teachers some instruction as they went home and plan for the summer. Now, even the teachers, and it was totally voluntary, some of the teachers chose not to pick up their materials, and we had successfully made sure that, again, about 98% of the teachers all had their materials. The only ones who still need to pick up things, or we need to deliver things to our teachers who are currently moving, we still have some teacher movement going on. But it was a tremendous experience, and although it was a very long summer, it was very rewarding. And George and I continuously said, "We will not complain about having a blessing as grand as this." It is absolutely incredible, and we're so proud to be a part of it.
Again, in terms of what is coming next, we already have e-learning resources on our district webpage to help facilitate implementation for teachers and for students. What you can expect as parents over the next week and a half or so will be, again, dedicated a section in the district webpage with links so that you'll be able to go on and log in with your students as they receive their e-text accounts. We are also working with Oakland School of Technology Services to create webinars, quick how-to videos, to be able to get, just to get, you know, just to make the transition a little bit easier, to be able to provide some clarity on how you can best support students with these new curriculum technologies.
Does anyone have any questions?
No question. I just have to make a comment. We started this process last spring. I have to just thank both of you, because you have done a Herculean job. There's been a lot of sweat, there's been some tears, there's been a tremendous effort to make this happen. And the vision that every book is accounted for in our district and signed for is something that we've never had, and I thank both of you for leading a community publicly. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
And I want to add, so the presentation of these people and the folks of the board was just outstanding. It was so interesting and so well done. Thank you.
And I too, Michael, I want to congratulate you on your new assignments, which will assist us in reinforcing teaching and learning here in this district.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We appreciate the board's support, the superintendent, and the cabinets.
We'd like to invite the community to come and register and help participate in the Saturday program. Registration for Saturday school is September 18th and 19th, which is Thursday and Friday next week. We will be at Michigan for a credit union from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., so we hope to see you there.
Again, this year, we will be offering credit recovery for our high school students. We will be offering K enrichment programs for K-8 students, as well as instructional support literacy labs, math labs. The cost for those K programs is $50. The costs for the credit recovery programs for high school are $150, and all programming takes place on the grounds of Southfield High School.
And all of this information will be available on the website. Thank you again for your time, please enjoy your.
Thank you. We can't always have to report from his room. I want to kind of, how many new students have began in the district this year, kindergarten zone? Do you know? In relationship to the student enrollment, I don't have a specific number of the families. What I can share with the board and share with our community is that our numbers are above what we budgeted for. So our budget, we have a budget in terms of how we were projecting student enrollment, and I'm pleased to say that we are above that, we are over that, yes.
So College Dubs began at BUSTY, he's been for us early childhood education.
This is the policy council note from Monday, September 8th, 2014. Regarding enrollment, under the directory report, the GSRT Great Start readiness program is fully enrolled. However, the HeadStar program has 145 students currently enrolled, and then waiting for TB test results are 20, and then 70 applications still need to be processed. The potential waitlist would be 75 students. Recomposition, BUSTY received the HeadStar grant back for five-year period. The new grant warrant number is 05CH8409. That's really important, anyone who's familiar with the HeadStar, how it operates. But recomposition is very important, and we got it back. So Program Information Report, or the PIR, was submitted on the HeadStar Enterprise System on August 25th of this year. A copy is located in the office at BUSTY for review. Full search for students on Monday, September 15th. BUSTY is participating in the Office of HeadStar's practice-based coaching initiative. Several staff members received training in peer coaching and will begin the coaching initiative in October. Mrs. Hill and Mr. Larkin, who's a teacher at BUSTY, were invited to sit on the panel of the National Black Child Development Institute in October. BUSTY was chosen as a lab site for, under the auspices of Oakland School, and the chip room will be a new lab site for the early childhood teachers to visit and observe our teachers' practices. BUSTY is up for relicensing this year, and the current license expires on October 31st, 2014. Champions received the license to provide for and after care at BUSTY, which is in response to many parents having to take their children out due to need for a for and after care, so this should eliminate a lot of the droughts with a half-day session. This year, BUSTY has added an additional assessment for reading, the predictive assessment of reading. It measures a student's current level of reading skills and then calculates an accurate prediction of present and future reading. Based on that assessment, teachers can create strategies for remediation. These basic skills will be assessed in a three-year period. So letter word calling, picture naming of vocabulary, phonemic awareness, and rapid name fluency. There were, there were three new hires at BUSTY, Mr. Davis, Ms. Scott, and Mr. Olden, a part-time family service worker. We're also asking on Wednesday, September 17th, for you to wear red, white, and blue to commemorate the HeadStar's 50 years of opportunity. All programs throughout the country are encouraged to wear red, white, and blue in celebration of that legacy. High school training occurred yesterday and today for teachers at BUSTY. Nabel Jones will visit the, our site from 9:00 to 4:00 on September 10th. Parent orientation is Thursday, September 11th. Call BUSTY for more details. And Curriculum Night will be held Tuesday, September 30th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. And finally, the budget report. As you are familiar, the 2013-14 grant was fully, well, we extended, I'm guessing that word is there, let me just double check. And funds were received, all of the funds that we had for that grant last year were extended, that is what the message is there, which is important. The non-federal share, the in-kind obligation was met and exceeded. All final reports have been submitted. So kudos to the entire Southfield community for the in-kind obligation not only being met, but to be exceeded is phenomenal. And then the district fiscal audit, the entire district fiscal audit is nearly complete, and there are no issues district-wise, which does encompass HeadStar and GreatStar. And the 2014-15 grant total is $1,650,368. Of this, 1.3 million comes from the federal government, the balance of 330,000 is in-kind, which comes from district paid facilities and support staff and parent involvement and volunteerism. That concludes the report for this month.
Well, if there are no questions, we'll close it. Action items, these are items requiring action by the board. You know, I have some of those moves that opened in the consent agenda.
Hi, Luke. We're in the consent agenda.
Thank you. The consent report 5304, that would be the personnel report, and the minutes from August 15th and 16th, the board adjournments. Are there any comments, questions? Call for a vote.
Ms. Hat?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Foal?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Janette.
Next, the information items, these items do not require board action. Report 5305, the purchasing report. We should open it. No, no questions? Are there any questions?
Just for the purpose of that of the board, but of the community, just to highlight that in terms of what we take seriously in terms of teaching and learning, I just wanted to highlight the large expenditures that this requires for stage equipment, playground mulch, $17,000. I saw something else on here that was interesting, asphalt replacement, fertilization to the tune of about $12,000. Stadium speaker repair at Laker High School, $19,000. So under, obviously they're under the So under, obviously they're under the threshold, but I still think it's important the community knows we take seriously our speed of getting the back and having things to be up to date. Not that.
The information items, so includes gifts to the board. So, is there some of things to read, the gifts to the board? Mr. Paul? Is it here? Yes. Yes. Gifts to the board. Right. Information, for information, gifts to the district. Valid donations were provided to Southfield Public Schools. One, Priority Health Systems donated $10,000 to the district to be used to support and promote curriculum related to health, medicine, and physical fitness. Two, Binzo International in Southfield donated $2,000 to Southfield High School to support robotics program. Three, Binzo International in Southfield stopped a school bus with school supplies. The Binzo employees collected supplies for several weeks to fill a school bus. The school supplies were donated to students that leave middle school in support of a STEM STEAM program, LEED, leaving van performed during the stop bus event. Four, the Center for Financial Planning donated $1,000 for the Southfield Public Schools' annual back-to-school fair. Five, Ms. Diana Pigler donated $100 for the Southfield Public Schools' annual back-to-school fair. Six, Books-A-Million Store, 174, donated brand-new books approximately valued at $1,700 to the Southfield Public Schools' annual back-to-school fair. Seven, Cherquell's Food Service donated free lunch for over 1,000 people who attended the Southfield Public Schools' annual back-to-school fair. This donation totaled approximately $950. Eight, 2911 Property Management LLC donated eight boxes of school supplies to students at Grace Library at K through 8 schools. Nine, BASF, Southfield's Women in Business Chapter, held a Tools for Schools donation drive and donated four boxes of school supplies to students at MacArthur K8 University Academy. Thank you very much, Mr. Paul. And thank you to the community and to the people who donated to all of these. Some were small, some were large donations, and we thank you very, very much. This also includes the bill summary, and the Southfields make a stage very, very good, they're getting their bids. They will be, I think, burn proof and, and, uh, mold proof, they will not mold, the current GreatStar falling apart. The Southfield and Southfield Laker High School stadium is still paying the Southfield stadium. And now we have public participation. The board recently adopted a business policy on public participation. Only those persons with concerns related to school matters may participate during the public participation portion of the meeting. Please note, comments are generally limited to three minutes. The board will listen to all comments but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or other administrators before telling the board, and cooperation is appreciated. I have a card here from Cory Bryant. She, thank you, Cory.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Cory Bryant. I live at 20150 Harbor Lane, Southfield. I just want to introduce myself to the board members. I'm the new Southfield Area Council PTA President. I am really excited about working with all the local PTAs this year. I've met many of them over the summer, and we did a lot of planning and organization of events, so we are excited. My goal, and the council's goal, and the Michigan PTA goal, is really to bridge that communication gap between the teachers, the parents, and the community. So, so that's a real good, so the echo on Dr. Wood, the echo of excitement. So we are excited for a great school here. And to help us with that process, I invite all of you to our future area council meeting. I know the JWE has their dates and our time, so they have my email and phone number information, so would welcome to the meeting. So I would just like to, you know, just like to thank you and for your time today, and I just wanted to introduce myself to you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Well, we come to board members. Is there another card?
Yes, but I'm sorry, I know there was a card.
You want to bring it up, please?
I have not filled it out.
Oh, okay.
But if it's okay, can I fill in and address the board?
What school?
Uh, MacArthur.
Oh, would you like to fill it out?
Yes, maybe I can now and ask what.
Good.
I'm sorry, I also need a card. Hi, apologies, forgot it's not a way up. Did we get the timing? I am coming today from MacArthur, actually, to the school. We're having issues with, three of the families there are having...
Your names, please, and where you live.
Sabrina Williams, 27561, California Drive, Laker Village. Three of the families were having trouble with transportation issues. I'm glad Durham's here. I did leave a voicemail message for Don, I'm waiting on him to call me back. I'm going to get that call probably tomorrow. We have three families, as I mentioned earlier, experiencing transportation problems. I, this year, started bringing the children to a bus stop, and I understand it's a school of choice, I understand the school of choice policy, I have spoken to Dennis, I have spoken to Ruby Johnson, and some staff members at the Durham Public School that as a school of choice, they are not allowed transportation if they do not live in the school area. I understood that rule. However, I was dropping kids off at a bus stop to get them to MacArthur, and was informed this year that that was a problem or an issue for the district. I understand that they're reviewing the policy for transportation, and I would like to know if there is any method that we can incorporate where schools outside of the district area are able to, even if they get dropped off at a bus stop, ride the bus if the, if the bus is going to that designated school, can they ride the bus to the school? I don't know how or who I address next, but I, the fact that you are reviewing the policy?
Well, what I will briefly say, and that's something that we'll discuss later, but it is a policy. This is actually the first time that I have heard of your request, or heard of your, the issue. We, I will be discussing with the board your request, and at this juncture, because it is the first time that I personally heard this, I can't give you any feedback at this moment in time, or we can talk after the board meeting and move forward from there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Will you be good enough to call?
Yes, yes.
I have a card here from Ms. Michelle Beasley.
We have to call you, that, listen to your card. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, board. Superintendent Linda Wood. I'm here as a parent on behalf of the Durham Transportation System.
Excuse me, will you have your name and address, please?
Michelle Beasley, 29570 North Brook Court, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. I have two children, one at McIntyre, one at Bernie. My main concern is, I understand that there's a lot of construction, you're not knowing which streets you can get through and which streets will be blocked. My main concern is the not knowing. I was at work, I had a child that wasn't at home, and it was after 5:00. I could not reach Durham, and I tried my best over and over again. I even called one time to ask to where someone picked up the phone and hung up. If I only knew where they were, if they were on the bus, if they were at the school, I could be at peace. But the not knowing, it's out of control. I understand you're adding more phone lines, that's my main thing, to get the children to school, back and forth, and to know where they are. If you can notify the school, and the school can let the parents know, either by email or however, just let us know that our kids are safe. That's, that's my main concern. And I have a second problem, I don't, I'm not sure if it's in place, but I changed my address to a post office box, and I'm having problems getting my mail. And I spoke with the supervisor at the school board, and she told me that they don't have P.O. boxes. Isn't there a way to confirm that I am who I am, my ID to my house or something, so that I can get my mail? I've never heard of such a thing of where you don't, your system does not take P.O. boxes directly.
I will investigate. Yeah, I will investigate for you and we'll discuss afterwards. We do need an address. We really do need an address.
I do have an address, but is there a way to confirm that I am who I am? Maybe you don't want outside kids coming in, if that's the reason, I don't know, but I would like to get my mail.
What we, what I will do is, we'll talk after the meeting, and I will speak with a few people in the audience here who directly can give me some additional insight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Curtis Brown? You did Curtis?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I, I too, I want to speak as it relates to Durham. Oh, my name is Curtis Brown. My address is 22530 Shepperton Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. I too, was one of the parents who had a question about transportation as it relates to being a school of choice. And we were dropping our kids off at, at the bus stop, and again, understanding that it may be a liability or not, but if we're responsible enough to get our kids to, on approach to the bus stop, and it's not a hindrance of taking someone else off the bus or taking someone else's bus, uh, seat or whatnot, I don't see what the issue would be with allowing students to be able to participate in that transportation to the school.
I just want to share one thing, and I will speak afterwards with both you and Olivia there, other parent. I didn't know you were dropping your child off at a bus stop. And so consequently, we do have policies, and it's for children's safety, and so that we can be accountable for every child. And so there's things that we have, we believe in policies, and so you, the decision to participate in a school of choice is a decision that comes with certain expectations. So I will share that for everyone in the audience and for those who are watching, and I'd be very happy to speak with you afterwards.
And just, just one more point. When my, when my daughter attended summer school, and she was going to her proper bus stop, the same way I drop my daughter off at that bus stop, I drop her off at the other bus stop. I don't see any difference in me watching my daughter get on the bus, me being there to receive my daughter whether they have the bus stop you chose for or the bus stop that I chose for. Thank you.
Cindy Lanson?
Well, I want to say good morning, because I'm used to saying good morning to coworkers and staff. I will say good evening, because it's been a long day.
Your names, please.
My name, address? My name is Cindy Lanson. I live on Stilker at 28705. I am actually on the corner lot of Stilker to Vannenburg. And first and foremost, I want to say that my children go to Vandenberg Schools.
Oh, that school?
Um, it is a transportation thing that I'm here for. Not to mention these, but I go to Durham. Transportation has been dropping and picking up the students for at least, that I know of, five years, because my kids have been in the district for five-plus years. It's been ongoing issues with communication. Sometimes parents not only leave, but other parents are at a high frustration when trying to get a hold of somebody through transportation. I don't even know how to explain it. There was a child that we dropped off at the wrong bus. Thank God that my fiance was the one that safely brought that child to their home, to the parent. Two years ago, and last year, I also, as a parent, had transportation issues where my daughter was on the bus for the first time in kindergarten at Vandenberg. And it scares me to death as a parent, because in any school district, no matter who the person that the school district has to have the transportation, it's every parent, whether it's grandparents or moms and dads, to have their child slash parents feel safe that their child is going to be getting on that bus and being dropped off. As parents, it is our jobs to be at that bus stop to get our children off the bus. It is policy, and I know the policy in Southfield schools, that you do not have a kindergartner get off the bus without a parent. Is there something, a petition, anything that, as a parent of Southfield schools, that moving forward may be a better system? But this has been ongoing for not just this year, but years in the past, and moving forward. I don't want to see another child get off the bus without there's some kind of collaboration with the bus drivers. There's not consistent bus drivers at these stops. Sometimes the bus passes up the bus stop with a parent standing there with their children. I've also had that happen. Moving forward, just more communication, so it's not looking like it's the school, and really it's not the school. The school and the teachers get the children, their students, safely on the bus, and then as parents, we're thinking the children gets dropped off, and they're not being dropped off at the correct stop, nor are they, um, the time. There's no communication. You're not able to get through, and then when you do get through, you get put on hold and cut off.
Thank you. So much I want to say, and I will just share this one bit. I feel and understand, and I don't want it to continue. And Mr. Millio and Durham representatives, we've had daily conversations, not only just to say we don't want to continue, but to start to put some things in place so there is better monitoring. The campaign for stay connected, get connected, stay connected, is because I want to make sure that our principals are notified. But when principals are notified, I want to be able to send a text message or do a voicemail so that parents will know that the bus is running late. So these are things that we're moving to put in place, because every child is valuable and we want to get home and arrive safely.
This board supports that thing. We value the safety of our students. It's a fine concern. It's a fine concept. It will, this problem will be remedied. Is there anything from the board that needs to accomplish with participation?
No, I have to reiterate what the board president was saying. I had the same thing happen to neither my students here in the district before Durham. So, like Dr. Wood said, that happens across the country. That's no excuse. I'm not making excuses. We will address the issue and get back to you, parents. We appreciate you bringing your students here to Southfield Public Schools. We will be thankful.
Mr. Wood?
I'd just like to welcome the students and the parents back, and I just wish everyone a happy season.
I know we're a board member, I don't just address you. You stole my plug there, President. Teaching them are safe above all else. That's what we're here for. And I've stated before, not, if someone, or if a student out there studying right now, if a student out there working right now, well, our students may be at home doing something else. And you have to be, they have to be able to complete, compete globally. And that's what I saw when I walked to the building. I was so clear, we, we just showed up, we didn't tell the teachers we were coming, we didn't want them to be. And that's what I saw, teaching and learning and involving. And those smart boards are just, just like a computer. That's what I was referring to. We walked up to the line, we had a little beam back, we threw it at the smart board, and that can came, and, and I played the role a little bit, but the students were very, particularly very smart. That's a math service. Our vice president had the same thing after her. She said a verb, imagine, so I'm saying, our students are learning, they're engaged. As we all know, Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "The foundation of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically." Critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of a true education. That's what we're all about. We want to celebrate, and I'm glad to see that motto, celebrate what is right. We also want to correct and redirect our efforts in areas where we see the need for improvement, continuous improvement. We're not comparing ourselves to other districts. We compare ourselves to ourselves here in Southfield. We have a high standard. We have the math assessment. Beautiful lady back there. I'm not sure what the name of the woman, but she is outstanding mathematician. She finds out where our students are, and she takes them where they need to be. Her and those teachers and administrators every day, every day. I saw it for myself firsthand. Now, someone would say the city governance is important. Absolutely correct, it is important. Yes, they do things like appoint members to the board, conduct the city's, and government affairs, provide protecting the welfare of the city and its inhabitants, transacting city businesses, and things of that nature. What you heard here tonight, that's something happened to one of our students. To me, that's one of the most critical and important issues, not issues, concerns here, is our students. And Daryl Buchanan, he pedemized, volunteerism and service, and was all about the students, and he still is. And I'm glad to call him, my brother. He will be missed. Dr. King also said, "If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward." And tonight, the motto was about the parents, and that's important. We need your help. Keep helping us to move your students forward. We can't do it alone. I'd like to see that village thing. We all, we knew that a long time ago, before that was even. Takes more than just the school. You can't just drop them off and expect them to get where they need to be. I was at the bank telling they transaction some business, and the lady said, "I wish I'd never sent my child to Southfield High School." I said, "Well, why not?" I was just curious, I didn't let her know anything. She said, "Well, he didn't perform well on ACT." I said, "Really? Why didn't you have him take it?" I was just curious. She said, "Twice." I said, "Oh, really?" That's where you know, uh, there's, we have math assessments, we have math assessments, we work with our students on Saturdays in the evenings, we have MME where we work with our students, we have ACT, SAT, and all those other tests. We work to get your students where they need to be, but where I'm going with this, your student has to want it elsewhere. I don't care where he goes, he can go to all these other schools surrounding us, but if he's an average student, may, I'm not saying he is, be an average student, and one of those other students. We have sixteen different, unique schools here in Southfield. We have something for every one of your students, and with your help and your assistance, they will compete in a global society. And thank you for your support.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I'd just like to real briefly extend, um, out to Daryl J. Buchanan. Best wishes, uh, his presence, his spirit, his, um, dedication to this community will be missed. But he's trained, um, a number of us on this board to carry that work forward. So, I want to wish him well in his endeavors, uh, and if ever there's anything I can do, please, uh, reach out to me directly. Uh, real briefly, I was on vacation, and I was in New York, and stopped off to see a, a musical with Audra McDonald, Lady Day. And as we were waiting for it to come out for a meet and greet, I noticed across the street at the restaurant, there was, uh, another actress picking up an ice bucket challenge. So, I get back home and open up my email, and I get a Facebook challenge. Uh, it's actually to bring more attention to ALS, and ALS for a full-time, uh, student care. So, I'm going to take that challenge, and with the permission of the superintendent and the board, uh, the next board meeting, I'd like to take that challenge. Just to bring more attention and education to that, granted that they all, thank you.
I do have a couple of things. I just, uh, I'd be remiss writing echo the comments of this magnificent board about our fellow colleague, Daryl J. Buchanan, who will tell you himself, I wasn't a fan of, in my time as a teacher at Southfield Schools, and, you know, you, you see people from afar, you don't really know about them, and you, you preconceive notions. And, um, I'm proud to say that through the four years that I've been on this board, that where I thought was a crazy fanatic of education, was a crazy fanatic for education. And that's what you need, that's what you must have. So, I'm just, uh, shouting out him and Ms. Belinda and their entire family. I mean, a season, a reason, and oh, I time, this is how life goes. So, um, I'd like to do echo the sentiments of Board Member William, because I was just amazed with how much quality instruction and learning occurs in Southfield Public Schools day to day. As with anything, you're going to have a wrinkle or a hiccup, and I think of Southfield Public Schools, probably any public school system as a body, and most times, people don't see the skeletal system or the muscular system, um, all those other components that go into the whole biological scheme. And we do a lot of stuff in Southfield Public Schools that, you know, they don't make the eleven o'clock, they don't make the live TV at twenty, at ten, at eleven, and, you know, so it's just nice to hear it here. You are our mouthpiece. We need you to go into the community and rep your city hard, rep your school hard, as they would say, um, because we are constantly, constantly under attack from Lansing, Washington, DC, neighboring districts. So, I, I'm proud to be a member of this board. I think each one of these board members is rock stars, are rock stars, I've got to get the acronym right. And, uh, just finally, because it's September, and I think as board members, we don't often get to say things because of the open meeting policy and la-la-la, so here's my opportunity to say it. When people run or choose to be on this board, we have very high standards of excellence. You know, awards of merit, we get pins for a distinguishedment, and that's the kind of board we want to maintain. We want to maintain these ongoing excellences. So, that's just my cry for those folks out there in the community, you know, that's the kind of board that we, we have here and we'd like to keep. So, that's all I have, and thank you.
Um, there's one more thing I'd like to say about Mr. Buchanan. Uh, and most of us like he dedicated to coaching boys' basketball. I don't know how many of you know about that. Just to, well, he collects these boys and he coaches them, not because of their basketball ability, but so that he can be a role model for them, and he is a fine role model. He teaches them to do their best, to strive, to be honest. He teaches them all the qualities that we want our children to have, and he does it consistently, year in and year out, and he is enormously successful. He is one of our most successful citizens in the city of Southfield, and, and when you see him, thank him for what he does. He does a fine job. Thank you.
Before you close, I'd just like to, uh, echo the sentiments that was made by my fellow colleague, uh, Daryl Buchanan. I would just like to say that I thought that he's, he has been an excellent board member. He's done a great job as, uh, board president, his service as, uh, board director on the MESB, and, um, his presence on this board will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, uh, future meetings of the board on September sixteenth at six o'clock. There will be a special board meeting to interview candidates for the board vacancy. We have exactly thirty days to select our replacements from the time that Mr. Buchanan resigns. On September twenty-three at six o'clock, there will be student hearings with Ms. Smith, Mr. Lewis, Ms. Robinson, and myself. But I have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I will be there.
Supporting.
Meeting is ready.